I'd like to call the order, the council meeting for March 16, 2015. Please stand for invocation, Bob Campbell, please.
Father, we ought to just put you on the agenda.
He is. He is.
In all honesty, it's an honor. I appreciate you all giving us opportunity. Me and Nathan both, I mean, anytime we can say a prayer, we're glad to do it. So, thank you so much for allowing me to do that. Gracious God, we thank you for this day. Thank you, God, for all your many blessings, and thank you for how you continue to bless us and keep this community. We ask you, God, to continue to watch over us and continue to help us to be what you have us to be. We thank you, God, for these Girl Scouts and their leaders. Sometimes we don't take time to thank the persons who have the patience and the time to give to our youth, and it makes such a difference because all of us are where we are and being the persons we are because somebody took time to train us or teach us. So, we want to thank all the persons who are working with the Girl Scouts that are here today. We want to thank Vicki for thinking enough to invite them here to do the Pledge of Allegiance. God, we thank, bless this board, bless this council. Be with them and continue to guide them in the way you want them to go. Continue to help them to be what you will have them to be. Give them the wisdom to make the decisions they need to make. But give them the strength also, God, to be able to do the right things for this community and help them to work together. They don't always have to agree, but they don't have to be disagreeable. And we think we've got a great council. We thank them for all the work they're doing. We also want to pray for our first responders. Thank you for all they do for us, all they have done for this community, and continue to work, be with them, and continue to keep them safe. And we ask you, Lord, to continue to bless this community and be a great community. In your name we ask. Amen.
At this time, I'd like to call Girl Scout Troop 542. They are our guests tonight, and they are graciously going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Welcome, girls.
Here's your flag over here. There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Very well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Real call, please.
They don't want to stay.
No.
Really?
Thank you all.
Good job, Vicki.
Counselperson Zostovny.
Here.
Counselperson Wadsworth.
Here.
Counselperson Sellers.
Here.
Counselperson Webb.
Here.
Counselperson Gill.
Here.
Counselperson Julius.
Here.
Counselperson Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect, eight council members are present. Counselperson Smith had a medical emergency in his family. Yes, and he apologizes for not being able to be here. Minutes to be approved.
The minutes didn't reflect, I'm sorry, the minutes didn't reflect the comments that, you know, we've been asking for Marty to go, and I don't think they're all in there. So, I'd like to maybe look at the changes collectively and then, you know...
Did he give you a report? Mr. Chauvin, did he give you a report? Yes, and it's part, it's been scanned in and part of the record. Can you just make that in here, that his report is part of, is part of the record in case anyone wants to see it or anything, they'll know that Vicki did it. It's not in there? No, just as Mr. Chauvin stated, that President Gill asked that he come before the council to give a brief redevelopment commission report. That's all that's in there. Yeah, we can put those in. We just need to amend it to put in there that he, the report, he had given us a report. And that it needs to be attached to the minute.
But that's the difference. Add this report to the minutes.
Okay. So, was that a motion?
That was a motion.
That's okay, I got a motion and a second with the...
And then we'll put it at the next meeting?
No, go ahead and approve them, because then we'll bring the amendment and show you the report we did.
That's fine with me.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Approval of the agenda.
There are no changes, motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion, a second for approval of the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I'm abstaining.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have one abstention. Mr. Julius. Motion carries. Amy, claims to be approved.
Approval of the agenda? Excuse her, on the approval of the agenda, you abstain?
No, no. That was on the, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you abstained.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was looking at the claims.
Okay.
My mistake, my mistake. Thank you.
So, then we do not have an abstention?
No, you don't have an abstention. My mistake.
I was going to say.
I made my mistake.
I was wondering that I...
I was reading.
Okay, Amy, thank you.
Requesting approval of claims totaling $646,856.57 as presented.
No questions, motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion, a second for claims to be approved of $646,856.57. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Abstained, yes.
Oh, we do have an abstention. Report of the clerk. Two things. First thing is, on the minutes, what we do is, we will put in there the minutes, on these minutes that you have requested that that be added, and then we'll put that in with the other minutes. So, you'll know that it will reflect, the new minutes will reflect what was asked today.
Is it all right to go ahead and sign this?
Yes. And then the second question, or second thing, I have been in contact with Pro Media, and I think I sent you all out an email the other day. I cannot update the council's main webpage. I can update each one of the individual council members' pages and the clerk's page. I have been corresponding back and forth with them. They've changed my password. That didn't do anything. So, I cannot update, take off the old meeting dates or anything until Pro Media gives me final permission to get on that page. So, I want you all to know when you see that, that that's what the issue is. I cannot get on that page to change.
And this is not the first time?
This is not the first time, no. But I wanted to let you all know what was going on. Okay, unfinished business. This is a public hearing, counsel for information. Amy Deering, we have the public hearing on 2015 OR 12. It's an ordinance additional appropriation, and it was passed on the first reading.
I have no changes to present? Um, wait a second. Okay. Where are the merit boards? You want to look at the...
It says general police and general fire.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, you need to change it.
At the top of the page. I would like to request on the fire, the fire merit board members, for some reason, they're getting double what the police are getting, and it should be $12,000, right? It's a, it's a $100 per meeting and how many board members? Six. Six. So, we need to change that so it's equal to the police.
Police has six thousand.
Six thousand, so it should be six thousand. Okay.
So, the third line down on page two is, you're saying six thousand?
Right.
Thank you.
That is not changing the reduction that we're doing out of the general fund.
Yeah, it'll lower it.
It'll lower it.
Yeah, it'll lower it.
About 18,000.
That would leave that 18,000 in that budget line.
No. We're removing it.
We're removing it.
I understand. We're appropriating by reduction from general line out of the clerk's budget. That's what that $118,000 says.
That's correct.
That stays the same because we're still taking that money out of the budget.
Right, it's just that they've been paid for every meeting.
Right. I understand. We're on the same page.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, the only thing we're doing is changing the merit board.
Yes. We're just only giving that 6,000 back.
And Amy, are they aware of this?
Yes.
I'm not aware of it.
I've spoken with them and have told them.
Okay.
Yeah. So, at this time, I want to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak for or against this? Please come forward and speak into the mic and state your name and address for the record. Not you. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to officially close the public hearing.
Oh, man.
So, we're ready for a motion, counsel.
I made the motion that we passed on this 2015 OR 12 on the second and third reading.
Second.
I was getting there, but... That the $24,000, the general fire merit board members at that fee changed to 6,000 rather than 24,000.
Oh, second.
Okay. I got a motion and a second to pass on the second and third reading with the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
We've got Scott Lewis, 2015 OR 13, an ordinance establishing Whirly Athletic Complex Non-Reverting Fund. This was passed on the first reading.
Yes, what I'm passing down, I had a call this afternoon from a couple of council members, and I just didn't get a chance to get emailed, to make a minor amendment for your, for your consideration to this particular ordinance. The ordinance I passed on the first reading referred to the ordinance establishing a Whirly Athletic Complex Non-Reverting Fund in reference to the construction and expansion at Whirly Athletic Complex. I was asked to just add language that included, for this non-reverting fund, to include the language and parks projects to, to the Whirly Athletic Complex language, just to provide flexibility in case, in case down the road. Because I don't think there's been a determinative determination yet on what was going to be done to expand Whirly Athletic Complex. And then if there was a decision to go in another direction or do some other project with the money, we wanted to make this ordinance flexible to allow that flexibility. So, if you look, there was a few places there where after the term to improve Whirly Athletic Complex, added language to consider other future parks projects and to have the money to be used for either expansion improvements at Whirly Athletic Complex or for future parks projects. So, that was the language that I was asked to add this afternoon to provide flexibility.
Where's that being added?
First of all, it's added in the title, title, and then basically in the paragraph, just the term, "other future parks projects" in paragraph two, three...
And "other future parks projects."
Four.
And, right.
And then down in the "now therefore be it ordained" in paragraph one, that future parks projects, whatever they may be, just to provide flexibility.
Kenny, is the right one that Scott just gave us, is that up for the public to see?
No.
Can we put that up or not? No, that's all?
We can do it through the...
Document reader? Though I'm not sure they can read that from...
Yeah, somehow someone moved it.
I still would like it to be publicly displayed.
Oh, okay. Just for some clarification, I was one of the ones who called Scott, and what I basically said is, if it's, if there's some opportunity to buy property or to do something that's just maybe a half mile up the road or two miles up the road from Whirly, but it affects the parking and, you know, can we do that? And he said, "Well, if we add this language, we could do that." So, that was the idea.
We give them a chance to get that up, and I will let council know we do have two that wish to speak on this, so I'm going to allow them to speak afterward and get that up.
Yeah. So, basically, nothing else was changed other than that addition of other future parks projects.
Scott, I have two members of the public that want to speak on this.
Oh, sure, yes.
So, at this time, Mr. Smith, would you please come up and state your name and your address for the record?
Okay, once again, Ron Smith. Thank you all for your service. I'm not here to pick a fight tonight. Anyway, my problem is our has-been, I'm hoping it's has-been. I don't care how much lipstick you all put on that pig out of Whirly Field, it is not going to be a beautiful pig. To have spent the money we've already spent is out of sight. It's unreasonable. I have walked over that place. I've looked at everything around there several times. And I assure you that that is the ugliest piece of property to try and prove that there is in Clark County. And if we're real smart, we will not do any more than maintain that. We will look for an alternative site somewhere. I would encourage that. I think parks are a very valuable asset. Everybody benefits from them. So, I would like to have this council know, now, if you've got a little, do a little bit of inventive numbers, somehow or other, I would like to see you buy a big piece of ground, and, and over a period of time, do it right. I think this would benefit everybody. Maybe not me, I'm getting a little old for that. But, but I know how much that I would have liked to have a place to play when I lived in Clayesburg. I grew up kind of poor. But, anyway, I think we need to learn to prioritize a bit because we are going, we are letting our streets right now go to the point that we're not, we may not recover a lot of them. I mean, they're, they're in horrible shape. I mean, I hope you all, if you drive around, you know that, and everybody in here knows that. Now, 10th Street is going to have to be widened. I'm not trying to take somebody else's agenda. I'm taking one that I think we need. My boss almost got herself killed on 10th Street about a month ago. I had two relatives that almost got killed on that, that, I mean, they did almost get killed. They were in, they were being rehabbed for two or three months. If you're not hurt bad, you don't, you don't do that kind of stuff. Now, we're going to have to wake up to the reality that we're going to need some money to take care of the sewer problem we got building, and it's going to collapse right on top of us. And our sewer bills are already high. So, we best be making some kind of plan that we can follow through on and do something before it's mandated for us. Now, I'm not running your city council, but all of us are taxpayers, and we all have an obligation to get the best deal we can get. Now, I hope that you all can go out there and, especially on this park thing, find a decent place, and we can, over a period of time, make something out of it. Please, 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 don't put any more lipstick on Whirly Field. It is, what you've done is, it looks good, but we cannot spend enough money on that pig to make it pretty. And if we go out and spend $3 million or so, that's my understanding, we're already sitting on four or five million that we've invested already. And in case you all don't know how we ended up with that, Mr. Whirly, first of all, he took, he sold the dirt to the State Highway Department to build 265. Then he came over and he gave us that property to get a tax, or get a tax write-off, which was nice of him. Then he gave us the property, and we've spent a fortune hauling the dirt back. I wanted to say a bad word.
Mr. Smith.
So, anyway, I wish us well and guard our money, find us something nice, make us something nice, and I hope that you all can do some horse trading, that maybe we'll come out of this smelling good. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Butler, please come up and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Alice Butler, 1773 Summerlin Place. I think you remember me from two weeks ago. But I'm a CPA, and I've been a CPA for 40 years, and I believe firmly in fiscal responsibility and transparency, especially when it comes to someone else's money. And you have to realize that this is someone else's money, it's not your money. Two weeks ago, Ms. Gill said, "There is no $3 million parking lot." But no one has since disclosed, at least that I could find, exactly what this $3 million is for. One of you told me, and I quote, "Councilman Z had the soccer fields as a project he is passionate about. He has proposed an indoor athletic complex to host a variety of events. The Parks Authority became aware of some ground adjacent to our soccer field that might become available, and the decision was made to move cash into a non-reverting fund in case this became a reality. The money is not committed and can be moved back. I believe the finished project, including the sports complex, parking, and adjoining property, would be approximately $5 million. I believe the intent was to have a little more than half on hand," unquote. And then, just a few days ago, Councilman Z said on the Clark County Chatter, quote, "Just to clear a few things, there is no indoor soccer facility being considered by the Parks Department. There has never been an indoor soccer facility proposed in the past, and there's never been a vote for or against such a facility." So, you can see that these seem conflicting to me and to a lot of people. Is there a proposed complex, or is there not a proposed complex? The other thing is, one of you said that this money can be returned. It's my understanding, as accountant, if you put it in a non-reverting fund, it cannot be returned to the fund from which it came. It can be moved to some other fund, which I think you're now doing by putting it in another parks fund or using it for other parks projects, but it cannot be returned to the general fund. Why do we need to put $3 million into a non-reverting fund just for a what-if or a maybe? Is this really the best use of taxpayer dollars? Why not let a developer build this instead of the city? The location is poor, the roads are bad to accommodate possibly 1,000 cars if the parking lot ends up being that big. The site's close to a railroad tracks. Have you considered what the annual operational cost of this complex would be and how you're going to pay for it? The council said not too long ago that you couldn't afford to keep the much-needed city court open. But suddenly, we have $5 or $6 million for a sports complex. I say, stop the nonsense, use our tax money wisely, and say no to this additional money for the Whirly Complex. Thank you.
Do you want me to respond?
Well, I want to make a quick comment. She mentioned that, I will assure you, as council president, I've been on this council, I've made known it, everybody up here, we take fiscal responsibility very seriously. And we're open and we are transparent, and so I'm going to let Ed speak, but this is just establishing the non-reverting fund. Anything that's going to be used with this fund, anything that goes forward, we will have public meetings. There's no plan in place, there's no contract signed. This is the same thing that Parks Department has done in the past projects, it's required that by, actually by State Board of Accounts, they asked us to set up an account so they can track everything. We did the same thing for Visiting Park. So, I didn't want you all to be confused that there's not a set plan, there's no contract signed. I'm going to state that again. And whenever, and I was one that said, "Let's bring this up for, in the beginning." So, you come along with us every step of the way. So, as soon as there's a project in place, or if we find land or whatever, we will have public meetings, and as president of the Parks Department, Ed will make sure we're all informed of all. But right now, I'm going to see if Ed, if you wanted to respond to...
Let's make just a quick comment. I usually don't like to comment, you know, from the public because, but I think something needs to be said. She, I'm sorry, I don't remember her last name.
Butler?
Ms. Butler. You know, she, she mentioned the, a comment I made in Clark County Chatter, and what you find in some of these blogs, like Chatter, is that there's a bunch of misinformation, and it's repeated enough times that people start believing it. So, I felt compelled to, to make a comment. And one of the comments that was said by her, I believe, was that there was a vote, nine to oh, for indoor soccer facility to be built. And I said, "There was no vote, nine to oh, to build a complex. There was never a proposed indoor soccer complex," as she described. You know, it's, it's these little parsing of words and little twists of facts into, you know, innuendo that's a problem, and that's why I felt like I needed to respond. So, as far as indoor soccer, or indoor facility, sports facility, that's always been part of what we tried to do at the Whirly Athletic Complex. We wanted to have football and soccer and a nice multi-sport, hard sports floor indoor complex. In fact, we made a video to say, "Hey, this is kind of how we'd like to see the concept." And we, and when we, when we went ahead with that project, we broke it up into phases because the cost was higher than we thought, in large part because of the cost of dirt and because of the, the cost of construction with the bridges. So, we didn't do the indoor multi-sports building. Also, we, that was going to be Phase Two. So, then, the soccer and football complex becomes a big success. They have so many kids out there, so many parents and grandparents out there, parking becomes an issue. So, then, the Parks Authority says, "You know what? Maybe we shouldn't put the building here because there's obviously a problem. Maybe we should use that property for additional parking." So, it opened up an issue, you know, it's a good problem to have, it's very successful, but we're going to have to change our plans. So, yes, we're looking, still trying to look to build a building, we're looking to solve parking problems, but we're looking to expand parks. And, you know, we can go on and on about the different aspects. Be happy to meet with you in person or anyone else who wants to talk. We could talk, you know, at the Parks Authority meeting if you'd like. But really, we are, you know, what we're trying to do is expand parks, finish the Whirly Complex, and maybe consider a multi-sports building in the future. But nothing has been signed, there's no contracts in place, there's no land, I don't know, you know, what land everybody's talking about. We haven't put any land under contract, but we're looking at options. And we want to make the best option, as Mr. Smith mentioned, we want to make the best option for the parks in Jeffersonville. So, we'll be like that.
Well, that's maybe true, but my question is...
Come to the, come to the microphone, sir.
I'm only going to give you a minute, because I usually don't allow this, but I will give you a... Why put the cart before the horse?
You know, if you don't have a plan, as you said, you don't have a plan, you don't have a specific facility, you don't have a specific proposal, you're all, it's all in the planning stage. Wait till you get your plan and then move the money out of the general fund. Because moving it out first means you cannot put those dollars back into the general fund, and that is a misuse of taxpayer dollars. Wait till you get your plan put together, find out how much exactly it's going to be, and then move the taxpayers' dollars. Don't do it now. That's ridiculous.
Mr. Deering, can you move the money back out of that fund? With, with one vote, with the vote of the council, it can be moved. Thank you.
We've also, we have also created non-reverting funds, but we have also voted to close non-reverting funds. That's, that's another thing that we've, we've done. But this is basically, this has been standard procedure in all our parks projects, has it not, Mr. President?
Yes, it has. And so, I don't know what this misinformation that keeps being thrown out there. This money can be spent somewhere else if it's not spent on this project. It can be moved to a different account.
One thing that I want to say too, and it might answer some of your questions, it might not. But I've sat in on most of the meetings on the different aspects of property and whether there, there's the possibility of a building or what have you. But coming from a business background, and I feel like I'm pretty conservative, but the other thing that I feel like is I am a planner, and some of these things you have to do to plan for the future, or in five years, there's nothing going to be happening. So, we have to plan, and we have to look out for the next five to 10 years, and where do we want to be? And the other thing that, that I would say in retrospect to moving the exact amount of dollars when you need them is, if, if we take a vote here to negotiate on a piece of property, it kind of gives you the, it doesn't put handcuffs on you to, to negotiate for a piece of property and get a great deal, as if I were buying it for my business or for my personal pleasure, or the Parks President was doing the same, or the president of the council was doing the same, or anything else. We, we don't need handcuffs tying our hands, saying that we really don't have the ability to negotiate on a piece of property. And I think all of us here watch the purse strings of the city very, very closely, and that's how we come in under budget every year. So, I personally think it's a very frugal...
And just so Mr. Smith and Ms. Butler, as you all know, it takes several meetings, like we said, if we are going to look at other property, it takes several meetings to do this. And we looked at that money that was out there, as we've explained, put it all together because we, as the council and the Parks Authority, we don't want to go outside what we already have. We do not want to enter into another band, we don't want to bond anymore, we want to use the funds that we have. And by setting this all this aside in that one fund... And just so Mr. Smith and Ms. Butler, as you all know, it takes several meetings, like we said, if we are gonna look at other property, it takes several meetings to do this. And we looked at that money that was out there, as we've explained, put it all together, because we, as the council and the Parks Authority, we don't want to go outside what we already have. We do not want to enter into another band, we don't want to bond anymore, we want to use the funds that we have. And by setting this all this aside in that one fund, that is our budget. That is what we're looking, is that not correct, council?
You know, depending on what the options are, it may be less, maybe more, nothing may happen with that.
I think a point of clarification is a non-reverting fund, funds that are put in a non-reverting fund can be moved again out of that non-reverting fund at a later time. The purpose of a non-reverting fund is to set money aside that doesn't go back into an unappropriated budget at the end of the year. So to do it by doing it in a non-reverting fund, that money can sit for multiple years without having to be re-appropriated year after year by a council vote. So that's really the only difference between appropriating money and moving money into a non-reverting fund. That can be moved at any time.
We will talk, if you want to talk after the meeting, I see you shaking your head and no, I mean, we'll gladly do that, but...
What the word "non-reverting" means?
It's governmental accounting.
Yes.
Mrs. Butler, I appreciate you coming up here, and I understand your concern. I haven't been on this council very long, but I've met with each and every one of these council members over time. And I can assure you that, you know, I wasn't voted in, I guess you'd say, from the public. And I was sort of sitting there thinking, where are these, where's this going? But after meeting each and every one of these council members, I can say that every one of them's got Jeffersonville in their best interest, trust me. I really do. I know that they, they're looking at what's best for Jefferson. And I don't speak out much, but it's just a fun, like Dennis said, if you're gonna do a business deal, you gotta set those funds off to the side if you plan on going forward. And I think it's in the best interest, personally myself. That's all.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Lewis, did you have anything else that you needed to add?
No, I don't.
Need a motion to pass on second and third reading, 2015 OR 13?
So we have a motion and second, so we have a motion and second to pass 2015 OR 13 on the second and final reading. Any further discussion, comments, or questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have Amy's hearing with the 2014 Annual Financial Report.
Let me get the stock camera. Do you want to use this? Sure.
Included in your packets tonight is the Annual Financial Report that we filed with the state February 28th. We gave you kind of a table of contents, so you can kind of follow where we are. I'll just give a brief overview, and then if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer. The first few pages here are actually, the first four items listed are our annual statutory requirements that we report to the state and present to the council. I don't think this had been done prior to last year, to my knowledge, so that's, I guess, why we're going through these steps.
That's great. Good information.
And then the next, the last two items are strongly suggested to be done by the State Board of Accounts. And I'll go through those when we get to them. The cash fund statement is just an overview of each of our funds. It shows our beginning cash, receipts, disbursements, and our ending cash as of December 31st, 2014. These are all stated in cash basis of accounting. Are there any questions about any of the funds or the balances? The next section is a, an overview of all of the debt that the city currently has, and that's across the governmental and the wastewater fund.
You want to go and see that page?
It's on page five. So we have to report what our ending balances are, and then the principal and interest that comes due in the subsequent year. Beginning on page seven, this is our federal A133 statement, which is our report of our federal grants that we received in the 2014 year.
Does this specify, it's like it's an 80/20 match, or 80/20, or what, it doesn't...
No, we just have to report the portion that's federal, so we would report 80% of the receipts, which a lot of these NDOT ones are 80/20. Some of your SRF ones are like 35, 33% in that range. And the orders go through that with a fine excuse comb. And then on page nine, this is a list of all of our capital lease payments across the It shows how much is due in this year, in 2015, and then the beginning and ending date of each lease.
Amy, I do have a question. It shows about the fourth, fifth one down, where we're leasing a Chevy Silverado.
Yes.
We, don't we usually, well, I'm looking on down now, too, there's some more Chevy Traverse leases in them, don't we usually purchase them and not lease them?
They'll only be listed on this schedule if we own them at the end of the lease period. Otherwise, they're an operating lease, and we wouldn't report them here.
Okay, so, we do own them.
So if you see it here, we should own it at the end. Then the next section is a little bit different. This is what the State Board of Accounts recommends, that we get approval from the board to accept into the record. These are all of our encumbrances from the 2014 budget that we had to carry into 2015's budget. As you can see, the majority of these are credit card payments where we incurred the cost in 2014, and we did not pay it until 2015, so we were able to carry that budget forward into 2015. Some of the other items were contracts that we had signed, some of the sidewalk money up towards the top. And the bucket truck, yeah. Then the final page lists our outstanding checks that are more than two years old. This is also a State Board of Accounts requirement that we get approval from the board to receipt these back into the ledger. So we've reached out to all the payees to see if we could reissue checks. We've done that on the ones who have contacted us, but these are the ones that are outstanding we need to receipt back into the ledger.
And do you need it to, for us to accept this, or...
Yeah, if you could accept it in the record, I think's what we need. It might be good to do the financial report, and then maybe the encumbrances and checks separate.
Make a motion to accept the 2014 financial report into the record.
Got a motion and second to accept the 2014 Annual Financial Report into the record. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So I need a motion for the...
Make a motion, yeah, for the encumbrances of 2014. Carry it forward.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to carry forward the encumbrances of 2014. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now for the receipts.
So move.
Second.
They got a motion and a second, and what exactly is this to have these go back, the receipts to go back into the...
We can't void prior year checks, so from an accounting perspective, we just receipt them back in and take the liability off the books.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. City Council Attorney Report. I don't believe, I wasn't notified of any council board appointments report, so I'm gonna go in. Is there any department heads here? Okay. Paul, you didn't have anything?
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay. And that, the public comment was both on the soccer field, so we already did public comment, unless somebody came back up, which I have the paper, so I think we're fine on that. So we'll go into council comments, councilperson, Restani?
Very meaningful report, thank you. I mean, you really get an idea of every aspect of the city finances, from the revenues to the cash, to the indebtedness. Really liked that report. I guess I'll leave my comment at that. Thanks.
Councilperson Wesworth?
No comments.
Councilperson Sellers?
No comment.
Councilperson, Councilperson Julius?
I just want to recognize, we had an officer do a very brave thing this week. Joshua Lebron, I think I pronounced that right, but he saved one of our youth that got, somehow got into our sewer treatment plant and plucked him out of there, and...
Plucked him?
He did. I mean, there's no other way to say it. And Joshua said, the officer said in a newspaper article that he believed in divine intervention. And that was it, I'm telling you. And we have an officer that we should be very proud of here in Jeffersonville. So, that was it.
Councilperson Owen?
Also want to shout out to our guys at the street department. Have had several comments about people who live in other communities but work in Jeffersonville. Commented that Jeffersonville streets were by far the best in the, in the area during our recent snow event. Even since then, they've been out patching potholes, and a lot of residents have been appreciative of that effort, and that's an ongoing effort. And we've had a couple comments about the condition of the streets, but that's a work in progress. So just thanks to Mr. Miles and his department, his guys that are working pretty tirelessly.
Councilperson Samuel?
Going on right now down at Preservation Station is something with our public art called Monumental Memories. And they did a call out for what I would call vintage photos of downtown. And the Preservation Station is full of folks that have old photographs, and folks that love photography, and folks that have been in families from this community for years. They got all these photos spread out on tables, and we're taking, I believe it's 13 of them, it's either 11 or 13 of them. They're all being selected with certain buildings that have already been pre-identified. And they're gonna blow them up to three different sizes. I think the smallest, like four by eight, then it goes to maybe six by 10, something like that, and then eight by 12 is the large, eight foot by 12 foot is the large. They're gonna be duplicated in, it's called sepia tone, and then printed on a nice polymer. Put aluminum frames around them, and they're gonna be mounted on either 11 or 13 of the buildings downtown. And it's gonna be pictures of maybe that same building way back in the, you know, 100 years ago or so. It's really exciting. And if you leave here, probably it'll still be going on, those of you that have an interest, Mr. Eklund. But that's a project that's coming up very soon. Second thing is, a number of us were here today from about 2:00 to after 5, after 5:30 actually, listening to five different redevelopment proposals for the gateway down at 10th Street, as you come in. And there was a, a couple of proposals were very interesting. Hopefully, we can come up with something very good out of those proposals. But that was an exciting meeting. Two more things. The berm out here I keep talking about, the first piece is gonna be mounted by this Friday.
You said that a couple weeks ago.
No, I said, I think, two weeks. I said that two weeks. That's what I was told just a while ago. And it's, we're having a master plan, an art master plan for the city here on March 30th. And the final piece will be done by March 30th, because we're gonna go from here over there and dedicate the whole berm. So, so it's happening, bear with me. And I think that'll get a lot of excitement, talk, a lot of people talking. And just my last comment I'd make, I just want to thank you, Steve, I appreciate your comment, because we get vindicate, or we get made villains, and it's hard to vindicate yourself, it's hard to try to say, no, we really are good people, or no, we really are conservative, yet all this stuff gets spewed out there. And I just appreciate your words.
Same here.
That's all I have, Ms. I agree.
I was gonna thank you, thank you as well, especially because, wow, this is really a good intention. We were starting this, and we were pulling money in from, that was left over, and I really thought we were moving forward positively and creatively, and, oh, well, but I did once again want to thank Vicki for arranging for the Girl Scout Troop 542. It's always a treat when we have, especially the young people in the community, to come and participate in the meeting, so thank you for that. And also, as you all recall, last year, that salary ordinance seemed to come before us, seemed like every other meeting. We've got quite a few issues. We've got, of course, the green space, that'll be hopefully coming online, and then there's some other issues in the salary ordinance. And Kim could not be here tonight, so I actually had those items removed from the agenda, so we'd have somebody here. But with the two new councils, we just think it's a good idea to have a workshop, so we can address all of the salary ordinance things at one time, and not to tie up the whole council meeting. So I wanted to schedule a workshop for 5:30 before our April 6th council meeting. If you all mark your calendars, I also sent out a heads-up meeting about that meeting. Is there anybody here that think that they cannot make that 5:30 workshop? I know that Kim did offer to Councilperson Wesworth and Webb that if you all want to meet with Kim prior to that, just to get yourself familiarized with the salary ordinance, since you're new to this whole process, and should be happy to do that with you. And then several of us did meet this past Friday with redevelopment. We had, the Director, Rob Wayes, was there, we had Dylan and Kelly Hoffman was there. And we went over the report that Marty had. Marty had some concerns about more spending, more going out than what was coming in, and according to his report, he had, he had some things that were a little bit mixed up or whatever. But I asked Amy if you wanted, did you want to address from what we, from our meeting, please, if you'd come up to the podium?
I had met with Marty a couple weeks prior to the last meeting, and I thought we were on the same page. So I was a little bit caught off guard with all the numbers that were flying around. But basically, just to hit on some high notes of the presentation that was given at the last council meeting, there's a lot of opinions being thrown out. His use of overspending, I'm not sure what he means by that, so I don't want to put words in his mouth, but there were some claims made that there were checks or expenditures made that weren't on the books, so I can't write a check if it's not in the ledger. So I just would like to say that I feel good about where we are financially. We had $22 million in the TIFs to start 2015. So I just, I don't really think there's any financial concerns there. I also just wanted to point out that the TIF spreadsheets that are handed out are stated with our liabilities and our expenditures. So you can't always take, he made the allegation that we're stating all of our revenues and half of our expenditures. Well, once something's been paid, you've got a payable, and you've got an expenditure, and it's all there, he's just not understanding the format. So I'd like to meet with him, maybe when he's back in town, and kind of get that all strained out, but I think we're in a good position.
Yeah, and I told council that I'll meet with them as well, and if the ones that were there at that meeting, if they want them to meet too, so. Was there anything else, Amy?
No, that was just high level. I think we're fine.
Amy, just a question, and you may not have this number, but out of that 22 million that's in the TIFs, how much of that was bonded paying ourselves back? How much did you borrow?
Um...
Was it around 10?
I think it was around 10. That was the 2013 A and B bonds. Yes.
I know the, to answer your question, or part of your question, Nathan, in the, because I was on redevelopment at the time, it was before Amy's time, I think.
Yes.
We were supposed to put 8 million into inner-city road, and 2 million into Falls Landing. That's the way I remembered it.
Yes.
That's the way that I think the, that the minutes would read. But that, that's the way that I remember it.
I think that sounds correct to me, yes. It should be in your, on that annual report I gave you, too. Are there any other questions about the report, or?
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted to publicly thank Nathan for all the great work you're doing with the arts. But I do believe that you had something you wanted to bring up from Mr. Northam concerning the green space, to go ahead and see if the council was behind him, go ahead and advertising?
Yes. The Finance Committee met to talk with Director of Parks, Paul Northam. He is in need of really moving ahead and starting to hire and, and get the ball rolling with his team of folks. And I believe that the council's consensus was, yes, we're going to go ahead and try this, lack of a better term, green team for, for this year, that Paul will be overseeing through the parks. And because Kim couldn't be here tonight to, to do the salary ordinance, we don't have those positions in the ordinance. So Paul was concerned about, you know, I don't want to hire somebody if we don't have them in the ordinance to pay them, or what, whatever. And it's going to take him a short time to hire them. But what I wanted to, I guess, see, or suggest, that we give him consensus, yeah, to go ahead and post and, and start that process, knowing that we're going to have those salary amount, or those people slated in the salary ordinance at our next meeting. It's, it's just a timing thing, because like today, the grass is beginning to grow. So...
His concern is that will take too long, and then they're going to be behind him.
So I, I guess I'd make a motion that we, we go ahead and allow Paul to start the process with the full understanding that those, those positions will be in the salary ordinance, that we will wind up ratifying. But we, we want to give him the authority to go ahead with the start, and maybe even hire somebody.
Can't hire someone who's not in the ordinance.
But you can notify, as long as they don't start working, correct? Could you, could you say, yes, we want Scott to start, but not to start till April 15th, or whatever? He's got, he's got to tire them down, I guess, what I'm, he's got to notify them. So they wouldn't be doing any work for us.
His thing is, if he hires someone, they're getting two weeks notice where they're at anyway, so it's going to take time.
Yeah. So what, how, how do we do that? I mean, I think, I believe the, the will of the council is, yeah, we, we, we're behind this. But how do we help Paul get out of this jam?
Well, I think, doing the motion you said, other than they can start working, bless Mr. Scott with the salary ordinance.
Yeah, we agreed to that.
I'll make the motion on what Scott said.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, questions, or comments?
The only other thing I'd say, you know, from a timing issue, if we need to have a, a special meeting, we could do that, a special council meeting to get that done.
Any other further comments, questions?
Paul, you okay with that? I see you're still here. Okay.
Okay. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Nathan. The last thing that I have real quick is, last week, I was a member, I think there's a total, Major Lynch, 16 of us in the class. The Citizens Police Academy class started. We had our first class, it's a 12-week class, and I am excited. It's got a curriculum, and I want to thank Major Lynch and Officer Chris Martin, putting this all together. And it's, it's going to be a good asset to the city. And I was really impressed with the curriculum and all the time and research that they've brought into bringing this whole thing together. So thank you for that. With that, do I have a...
You're not going to let her shoot a gun or anything, are you?
Motion to, a chair.
That's why, that's why you all got the simulator, so we don't have to do it.
Meeting adjourned.